The bell will ring and it just did. We thank you for being here tonight and it's good to see faces out there. Familiar faces and not so familiar faces, but we'd love to get to know all of you. And we're going to stand for a prayer followed by our pledge. Our heavenly Father, we go through peaks and we go through valleys in life. And some things going on in our lives that are difficult right now and you know what they are. Losing an officer and just the things that surrounded that. We pray that you be with our, our team, not just our police officers, but everyone who is, who is struggling with that, all of us. And we just pray for the mental well-being of everyone here. We thank you that everyone here is so close and the fact that they love one another. And we pray for our nation today. We pray for unity in our nation, that we will all love one another, that we will embrace one another and, and respect one another's differences and that we will do it in a way that is, is pleasing to you. And there is no mean-spiritedness in which you, you would, would support. And we know that that's the case, so we ask that you would convict us to, to do the same. And as we deal with the, the business of our town, pray that we will be handling this in a, in a wise and responsible way and that we will do everything we can to do what's best for our town and keep ourselves informed and respectful of the taxpayers' dollars. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Public comment period, we give you three minutes to speak and it is your time. We ask you to come forward and state whatever topic you want to. And we ask that you fill out a form like this that's on the back table. Give it to our clerk when you come forward and state your name and address. And if it's a short answer that you need, maybe we can provide a short answer, but we try not to make it a back and forth. It's all your time. So I have, the first, the only paper I have to, to tonight is Philip Fields, so we'll start with you and then anybody else that wants to come up after him. Mr. Fields? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Philip Fields, 382 Mann Road, Tyrone. And I'm a pastor here and we put in a simple request to have an event last night and we used the park and just wanted to thank you. Wanted to come here tonight and thank you for giving us the freedom to have use of the park and to express our First Amendment rights and to pray, to pray for our nation, to pray for the situation that many people are facing in our community. And thank you for supporting that and thank you for providing police safety and support also. Understand some of those officers may have stayed a little late and so thank you. Just wanted to say that to you. We really appreciate it and thank you for all who prayed and were involved. It meant a lot to us and I think a lot to our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else? Speaking of familiar faces? Yes, it is.
That's a good.
I don't know, that's for you to decide.
Good night. Hello, everyone. I'm Sandy Dow. My address is 355 Swanson Road in Tyrone. I own the Moving Cafe catering business and also the Moo To You food truck. So tonight I'm here just to speak a little bit about the food truck in the park that we had, just a kind of an update for everybody. The first thing I'd like to say, and I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but Mayor Dow can attest, if you want the truth from me, you're going to get it and it may not be what you like, but that's just me. So first off, I'd like to start out with the name and I don't know who made it, but maybe we could work on that a little bit. Tyrone Bites. I was born in the eighties, so when somebody says bites, that was never a good thing. It meant that something was not good. So Tyrone Bites is kind of a joke and I don't want the town in this project to be a joke. So we were at a Founder's Day meeting and so we threw some other names out. Tyrone Trucks at the Tracks, Tyrone's Mobile Munchies, Tyrone's Food Truck Hub, Tyrone's Food Truck Oasis, Tyrone's Street Cuisine, Tyrone's Fresh and Fast Rolling Gourmet's, Tyrone's Flavor on Wheels and Tyrone's Taste on the Go. I know we always say if we have a problem, we need solutions, so there we go. I'll leave you guys with those, those names, but there were a lot of people that have brought it to my attention as well and I was kind of just brushing it off, but it is, it does kind of make it sound like it's not a good thing and we want it to be a great thing, so. First of all, and then I was there Friday. I was the only truck there at lunchtime and we did 10 guests. Thank you to Philip, Ms. D., the Police Department, everybody from the town came over and ate. I greatly appreciate y'all's support, but we only fed 10 people at lunchtime. The dinner, the dinner meal, we fed 18 guests and Snacks on the Go was there also and she was selling slushies. So it was kind of a slow day. Unfortunately, that weekend was opening day at baseball and we kind of got an email September the 2nd about the food truck park. And a lot of us who have food trucks catering businesses, this is fall festival season, so we just didn't have enough time to plan. We're all trying to fit in and, you know, I said to Philip, I'll fill in when I don't have something else going on, but this time of year is very busy for food trucks. So variety-wise, we're not going to have as many because of that. They're already booked at other places. But hopefully it'll pick up, hopefully customers will pick up. I talked a little bit, I think, to Philip and everybody about maybe doing it twice a month or once a month until things build because people are going to come, other food trucks are going to come and they're not going to want to just feed 10 people or 15 people. It's not, you're not going to make money that way. So maybe if we did it a little bit less, just my opinion, for, you know, for a bit, just to get people used to it. It seemed like there wasn't a lot of, oop, now I'm done. Can I finish? Two minutes? One minute?
Two minutes.
Okay.
No, I'll give you one minute.
Well, I get one minute. Okay, let's talk this far fast. Just that we, if we have somebody different in there, it's going to help and if we have, you know, people, word of mouth is basically all we had for advertising. There was not a lot of advertising out there. So if we can, I don't want to sell Phillies out there every Friday and Saturday because people are going to get sick of my Phillies. And my Phillies, I use them, that's kind of like, it loses the charm of the special events that we have here in Tyrone, my opinion, in my truck. I want that to be special for Tyrone. I don't want it to be every Friday and Saturday that somebody can just pop up and get it, so. But hopefully it'll, hopefully it'll build. My opinion right now, I wouldn't spend money to make a big food truck park until we can make what we have, as what we have right now, work. In my eyes, it's not, we're not making enough money to, to build a whole park. Just, it, it needs to be a lot more. I don't do it for a living, but the other food trucks that are out there, that's their living. That's how they're paying their mortgage and stuff. I do it for fun and for the town, so mine's totally different, but they're not going to come for 10 or 15 people. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, Sandy. All right, anyone else? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to improve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ms. D., are you going to present this item? Okay. All right. You want me to stall?
Good evening. Before you is our first application for an off-premises alcohol catering license. The ordinance was passed in 2020, giving business owners that already have a current serving alcohol license for their establishment, the ability to apply for an off-premises catering extension to their license. Once approved, they could apply for a special event alcohol permits and serve at different commercial locations that meet alcohol serving and consumption requirements, including distance. They also have to apply for a special event permit with the Department of Revenue and report their taxes to the town.
Thank you. Are there any questions for D. or for maybe the attorney or anyone? Okay, we will open the.
I just have a question. What, can you clarify when this change was made? For the off-premises? Because I thought you said 2020.
Brandon, do you have an answer to that question?
We did.
Yeah, we had a recent update, but the, the original language for off-premises catering as a license option was in 2020.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this? Okay. The public hearing is closed and is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the alcohol license application for John Kaufman for Partners Two Pizza of Tyrone for off-premise catering for malt beverages and wine.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you for doing business in Tyrone. Okay, Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item before you is a recommendation to revise the fee schedule that we, we just recently adopted to include minimum fees. So we did approve a new fee schedule for building, planning, zoning, engineering and environmental services in April of this year. These fees were, were updated to comply with House Bill 461, which replaced the valuation method with a strictly square footage-based method of calculating fees. Since then, we've identified an issue, one that we did not, we didn't really think was, would be one, but projects with very, very small footprints are producing fees that don't really cover the cost of reviews and inspections performed by the staff, by staff and Safe Bill. As a result, we recommend that we enact some minimum fees established with certain permit types that don't have minimum fees. Others did already have minimum fees, such as trade permits and things like that. And these fees have their basis in truly the cost to actually do the work. So House Bill 461 does primarily want these to be based on square footage, but it also allows certain inputs, such as the cost to actually perform services associated with permits. And so that's where the basis of these fees kind of comes from. So for planned review minimums, we recommend a minimum of a $150 review fee for residential and a $250 review fee for commercial. For our base building fee minimum, minimum of $100 for residential and $200 for commercial, a base administration fee for the town of $30, a flat fee for demolition of $150 and $200 for commercial, and that includes planned review for demolition. And then a flat fee for pools as well, residential 300, commercial 500, and that includes planned review for pools. And then a revision after approval of, of the set of plans, we'd like to establish at 50% of the original planned review fee. Staff does recommend approval of these fees and if you have any questions, you can let me know. We, we will actually also have some, some updates, some housekeeping that we'd like to do behind some of this update of the fee schedule as it pertains to the ordinance. Where the ordinance authorizes us to have fees, we would like the ordinance to reference the official and adopted fee schedule. So just a FYI, if you see another item come before you regarding this, that's what it's going to be for.
Any questions for Philip?
I have a question for Philip. So I know that by setting these minimum fees, that they address the present costs, but what happens if, you know, we no longer use Safe Bill, we use a different organization and they have higher fees? Are we going to be constantly changing the minimum fees in the fee schedule in order to meet that threshold? Or is this something that could, you know, that has some variability in it so that we can address that issue ahead of time, to be proactive?
Some of these fees are based on the town's cost, which would remain relatively constant, you know, barring, you know, hyperinflation or some massive changes in wages or something like that. So that's a stable fee. The same would go for any of the fees that are tied to our services with Safe Bill. It, it is unlikely, it would be, it would be a rare event for us to change our services or service provider associated with permitting. The only potential change that we would do is perhaps to bring staff in-house to do all of that work. If we decided to do that, we would then kind of, we would maybe take a look at these fees and assess whether or not that's accurate based on their hourly rate. I imagine it would probably be similar, but as staff, we don't really anticipate making a shift like that anytime soon. That would be, that would be a very significant shift for the town.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the revised town of Tyrone fee schedule to include the permit minimums.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Brandon, can you present the next item?
Good evening. The next item is approval of the purchase and installation of a sunshade structure for the pickleball courts from Playworks, an amount of $10,253.47. We've had some requests from the public about a shade structure at the new pickleball facility and council asked us to budget for that and pursue this purchase in the current budget. Recreation put the bid out, I don't know, a month or two ago, right after the budget was approved and we got eight bids back. The low bid was Playworks at $10,253.47. Playworks, if you remember, is the same company we contracted with to build the new playground across the street. It's a great structure. Playworks is a reputable company in this field and so we, we've obviously worked with them before. So the $10,253.47 came in $1,253.47 over budget. So our recommendation is to take the, not, take $9,000 of the, of the amount from general funds, which is what was budgeted for this project, and the remaining $1,0253.47 from us, from the Recreation's assigned funds budget to cover that cost. And this does include installation.
Warranty, warranties?
There are warranties, but it's, it's, it's in your paperwork. It's going to be listed there, so it's typically a year.
Okay. Can I ask a question while you're, while you're looking? I looked through here and I'm sorry, I, I couldn't find it. It may be in here. I can't figure out where exactly this thing is located.
Oh, okay. It's, it's.
I assume it's in between the courts.
Yes, in, in the plaza. You've got, you've got, you've got the courts on either side, you've got planners at the front and the back and there's a, in the middle, yeah, there's, in the middle, there's an open area. I think they have a couple of picnic tables there now. It'll, it'll go there, so you'll have a shade in the middle of the facility.
Okay. There's one picture in there that has it actually on the court and I think, not on the court, but literally on the pavement next to the court.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be on the concrete in between the two sets of courts, in that, in that plaza in between. Mr. Campbell, the warranty in the, in the paperwork is 12 months was required for a minimum warranty and the supplemental warranty for 10 years for the fabric.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? There a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the pickleball shade and installation bid to Playworks for an amount not to exceed $10,253.47.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next public comment period is same rules and we welcome you. Ms. Sandy, if you want that extra minute, now is your chance. You're good, that extra minute. Okay, all right. You, anyone is welcome to come forward at this time and you get three minutes. Same rules apply. Okay? You're none? Are there any staff comments? Yes, sir. Chief?
Good evening.
Welcome all of you, the 25th. We will be celebrating Major Van Brock's retirement and we will be down, bow between 1:30 and 3:30 and just stop in, say hi, or you can stay. Want to let you know that once the retirement is concluded, we will be conducting, appoint, making some appointments, some promotions, three to be exact. Hope to make those public very soon. After we complete those three promotions, which will be for captain and lieutenant, then we will be testing for sergeant and corporals. So we hope to have everything lined up the way it needs to be in order. We are also interviewing four, maybe, maybe five applicants, one of which is certified. And that will be, I believe, the 28th of this month. Hope to be back to full staff very soon.
Thank you, Chief.
While Chief's here, my staff, I have a couple of things, but I just want to, as the mayor mentioned in his prayer, we had a critical incident or an issue with one of our, an officer that affected kind of everybody internally. I just want to thank Chief for his leadership through that. In times like that, you know, it's important to have a, you know, somebody at the top of the, of the agency who's, you know, understands what, what needs to be done and, and I think he, he more than, he outperformed himself on that and he, he had people on, on hand, you know, within, within, you know, a day to, to start, you know, the counseling process if anybody needed it and we're, we're going to continue to expound on that. I think I told you guys about that in my last report. So Randy, thank you for, for, for your leadership in that situation, sir. And the only other thing I had is, as y'all know, elections are coming up. There are, you know, we have, we have two people running for office, no one's running, nobody's opposing anyone, but we do have an election. It's important that everybody comes and votes. There will be a change this year to the process, so early voting will be held here at Town Hall and Election Day voting will be held at the library. I haven't announced anything officially because the, the Board of Elections hasn't voted on that officially yet and they won't vote until their meeting next Tuesday. Once that's done, we can advertise everything official, but I did want to update you all that, that I have talked to Brianna, that is the plan. She's still on board with that and I'm, I'm hopeful that the board will, at this point, of course, continue on with that. So we'll, we'll get more details out for everybody as soon as we get back the official from Brianna.
Thank you, Brandon.
I, I did have one announcement, just a notice that there is a rezoning that's been advertised. It will go before Planning Commission next week on the 25th and it will go before you, before council on October 16th. It's a rezoning of 245 Briarwood Road by Mr. Childs, Tyler Childs, who owns the property. He's rezoning it from agricultural residential to R-18. That's the request. So just want to let you know that's off of Briarwood Road. It's just past the Laurelwood, Laurelwood Road intersection there, just so you're aware.
Staff, anything else? All right.
Just so you know, the, the auditors were here this week. They completed their on, their last onsite thing for this year, for fiscal year 2425 that ended June 30th of 25. So it'll, they do not have to have everything complete until December 31st. Usually it's sometime in December when they finally finish everything up, but it went really well. We had everything, really, we had very little problems at all and we were able to resolve everything. So I expect another favorable outcome with that. And we will probably have Julie George back from Rushton Company, probably in February, which is our typical time to have a report for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That all for staff? Counsel?
Sorry, did you want to mention the update from, from the Tax Commissioner's Office?
I spoke with the Tax Commissioner's Office today through email and I was told that they are struggling to reconcile the tax books right now. Last year, they had new software and I think they're still kind of trying to work that out. And if you remember, normally taxes are due November 15th and it was January 15th this year. Now they're trying to get everything situated again and on top of that, we had all those new laws and they are struggling and they can't get it reconciled. They will, but they're not there yet. So I was told that hopefully by the end of next week, they'll give me a better idea of when that might come to us. So when they're done, we'll have a really quick turnaround as we do every year. It's just that it's been delayed. So at this point, I'm expecting at the earliest that taxes would be due would be January 15th again, but we'll see if they can reach that goal. That's kind of what we know right now.
Thank you.
All right, council comments?
I have one comment. I would like to say happy anniversary to my wife. 16 years. Love you, sweetie.
That lady's turning around like you're sorry? She's not in the building.
I have, I have a, a, a point of order, I guess, in a way. In regards to the election, not only are, are town council positions on that ballot, but the Public Service Commissioner, which is a very critical role for the entire state, will be on that election ballot. And so it's very critical that all of our citizens show up to vote for the Public Service Commissioner. The second thing is, I would like to express my condolences to the former officer, his family, and I know that Chief has done a very good job and the town has, has mourned his passing and also for the young man who was killed on the motorcycle at 74 and Tyrone Road. Extend my condolences and I know that all of council and all of staff feels the same way. We have sympathy towards his family and keep them in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I do want to point out about the, about the passing of our, our former officer, the way we got to witness how, how much our employees, especially his, his fellow officers, the things that they were doing for him in giving of their time, of their resources, of their, I mean, it got on down the list. They were doing so much and to see that type of support and camaraderie and it, it meant a lot to me that, that they were investing in him the way they were. And Chief, that's, that's a top-down kind of thing. And it's, it's good to see that, that your team supports one another and invests in one another and loves one another and, and bad things happen, but they were, they were there. And so I, I respect and admire each one of your team members for that. Okay. We do have an item for executive session, but it is just to approve old minutes, so all we have to do is read them for a minute. So we're just going to pause while we read our minutes. Okay. Is there? Is there a motion to approve the executive session minutes from September 4th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are, we are adjourned.